Meeting started.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sounded away.
Very good. We need, I'm sure you have everybody. Sixty. Board meeting and so. April twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, library board, the eighth, the seventh, eighty twenty five, planning commission. I have many minutes. I'll take a motion. Second, any changes to the board meeting? Let's. Questions? Any say aye?
Aye.
They can sign off. You wish to speak? Um, Katie took up your seat here and if you would come up to the. Yeah. Please look at your name and.
What else did you need?
Under a safe.
God, twelve, twenty one, pills I drive and keep awesome.
Okay, thank you.
I have these open.
Okay.
For now, are you okay to speak now? I've never done this.
Just go, just go ahead.
I'm here, well, because my, there was a recommendation to deny my operator license. I had one, they just had it. And I'm saying, you know, nothing has changed. My circumstances, since I applied two years to him, got approved. And so. And then. I mean, I'm not sure what's. You want me to tell you why I don't get it? Get tonight? Okay. So I got in trouble thirty two years ago, thirty three years ago. Um, I never found out until about seventeen years after the fact. I'd gotten trouble. I. Me and my roommate stole something when we were in our young twenties, really stupid. I haven't committed a crime since. Um, I went to my probation office because that's what I got. I got probation. And I was living in the state of Florida at the time and asked for permission to move with my parents. They'd just moved to Georgia and I was in just a bad situation and had no money and I was not in a good spot and he approved it. And I honestly never heard anything until two thousand twelve. So this happened and I moved ninety three, the date on this is ninety five, and then in two thousand twelve, I went to renew my passport. And it took forever. I didn't get it, didn't get it. Went to Chicago to try to expediate it and. Well, after my husband left New Mexico, I got a vanilla envelope in the mail saying that I was on, um. A violation of probation. So I immediately called a lawyer and he was in Florida, I was in Wisconsin and charged me a fee to. For him to take me on and we went back and forth on the phone. He said that he talked to a judge and got him to discuss, uh, just basically like a fine with the monetary amount. I think it was like fifteen ninety five. Paid him for that and then. Um, he had asked me for a final, he said it was all taken care of, wanted another final bill and I already paid almost four thousand dollars, so I asked if I could pay him payment plans. And he told me that, um, he didn't take payment plans, so I said I'd need some time to save up for that additional amount and then. He, um, I don't know, within the next couple of months, he sent me an email saying he was dismissing me as his client. So, but he had told me it was all taken care of and I hadn't heard anything. And then when I applied for my operator's license two years ago, I got a call from the police department and he. Said, did you know that there's an arrest warrant for you in Florida? And I said, I really thought this was taken care of and. I, I'd asked her at the time, I said, is this gonna, is this gonna keep me from getting my operator place? She said, oh, no, not at all. I just thought you should know. And then we just had to apply again. I actually have been in the steps of trying to get the paperwork I need from down there. So that I can actually get a lawyer, because I talked to a lawyer who said, this is what you need to get. I need all of these things. And so that I can get dismissed. That's, I've been at Target for twenty two years. They. I've been a retail manager for thirty years. I haven't committed any. I don't, I'm not a criminal in any way. I haven't done any, uh, like, um, I think that I respect what, what it is you guys have to do. And the, I respect the fact that it's a privilege to have the operator's license. But it's also something I can chat in order to my job.
So, um, um, thank you very much. So, take better considerations. Thank you for your, your.
Thank you.
All right. And what else we could be heard? Right. Let's move on to business presentation of the president. I do have one thing to deploy for reading here. Okay. I did get letter. And, uh, so very nice complimentary letter from Richard Rorhorn. And read this very quickly to them. I have any concern. This is dated June twenty third, being recently repaired. I had the opportunity to observe the removal of a twenty foot. Plus tree from partway Eighth Avenue next door. I mean, the efficiency and professional way the project was completed was very impressive. The crew that felt the tree did it quickly and safely, removing all debris, leaving the job site spotless. The next day, the gentleman that removed the stump used the state of the air equipment that allowed him to. Quickly and safely complete the task, making sure, uh, to set up portable fencing to protect the area from flying object. A new crew follow-up that cleaned up and removed topsoil and wood chips and prepared the area proceeding. All of these tasks were done with little visible supervision as each person seemed to know what was needed to be done and stayed on task. I'm certain having the proper equipment. Skilled technicians and excellent training save the taxpayers a large amount of money. I've always been proud to be the resident of Village of Grafton and this supports that. Sincerely, Richard Rorhorn. Uh, very nice job for our public works department. They work hard and stop what. All right, let's move on to a resolution. If you wish to leave, you can, um, Tricia, you can leave if you want. We'll set. Um, and, uh, we will go to Jesse to report the finance and personnel.
Certainly, before the village board this evening is a recommended approval of the Village of Grafton's twenty twenty six to twenty thirty capital improvement program. Each year, um, this time of year, the village comes forward with a five-year plan for these large-scale, um, projects and or equipment, uh, purchases. Um, this is a non-binding plan. This sets forth over the next five years what we think, using, using the proverbial crystal ball, will be our priorities with regards to large-scale equipment and, um. Project needs. It also outlines the potential funding sources that may be used. But again, this is non-binding. This does not. Say how we need to fund these projects, if we need to do these projects in a given year. Um, case in point. Last spring, uh, staff came forward with a capital improvement plan that laid out a vastly different road program that is than what is currently happening. During the course of the year, we found underground, uh, infrastructure was failing on Falls Road. And that needed to be addressed, therefore that portion of the capital, the capital portion of our budget was. Turned on its ear and reprioritized with not only different size, shape and scope, but also funding mechanisms as well. So that is a really great example of how the capital plan can change between now and the budget, uh, process. Um, there has been no committee feedback as this has been presented to various subcommittees, um, nor has there been any departmental feedback. Um, therefore, uh, coming forward with a recommendation for approval by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Um, Director Stodahart is here to speak to any particulars in the event there are any questions. Um, otherwise it is a positive recommendation.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, bring this to the table for discussion. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Thank you very much, Dave. Uh, any questions at all?
I have none.
Okay, open up to the rest of the board. Anybody have questions regarding this? Um, Ms. Robert?
Yes. Um, so I don't believe the representation of public works. Did we give, and that would have had to have been in May, was that right? Okay, and it picked me out of here.
Three, three, six, go, let's, uh, go to the reported.
The Plan Commission is recommending an amendment to the Village of Grafton voting ordinance regarding keeping ducks. Um, so the, the code amendment was proposed, uh, by a resident. Who, a member of their family is allergic to, um, chicken and chicken eggs. So, um, they are familiar with keeping ducks and are requesting this amendment. Um, the amendment would allow up to four chickens and or ducks total, um, in all single, in all building districts that are houses. The ordinance amendment includes a detailed requirement for keeping of ducks. Including right standards and disclosures, um, open areas for them to be ducks and, um. In order for them also as, as a requirement, I think one. Uh, again, Plan Commission is recommending the amendment after that.
Thank you very much, Jessica. I'm really hard enough to come up with any funds to make. Fall representation. So, yeah, there we, all right, so we have to bring this to the table and look for your motion and second to. It's chapter nineteen, so many ordinance articles, two to three, we're ready to keep in here.
Make the motion. I'll second.
Thank you. So. Any questions?
Not.
No questions? All right, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then. Jessica, release of pre-annexation.
Yes. The Village and Landmark Credit Union entered a pre-annexation agreement in early two thousand. For the one point six acre site at twelve ninety four Fort Washington Road. This property was intended to be developed and was annexed into the village at that time. The pre-annexation agreement identifies a variety of responsibilities by this credit union, including. Um, assessments, fees and a right-of-way dedication. Staff has determined that returns and requirements of the agreement have been met, including the right-of-way dedication and payment of all fees. Um, and at the request of Landmark Credit Union, um, because they want to report selling the property, so they have a basically free and clear, um, record of the site. Um, that is recommending those for approval of the weeks of the agreement.
Very good. Thank you very much. This table to discussion, motion to approve release of the pre-annexation agreement between the Village and our credit union related to the site at twelve ninety four Fort Road.
I'll second it.
Dave, any questions? Anybody have some questions here?
Indeed. Um, what exactly is the property? Because I, I looked it up on Google app, said it shows it as. Kind of like it's for fall property by, uh. By where they're developing that chicken.
No, it's the land on, um, on, excuse me, Washington, on Highway sixty, just east of, uh, Bank Five Nine, on the north side of the road. A little piece. Yep. There used to be a couple of houses there way before my time. I'm not sure when they were demolished.
So like east of. Cole and.
Yes. It's right for the power lines, but over Highway sixty as well. Immediately west of me. That is, no, an error on my part. I must have got that from something else. I don't believe it has an address assigned to it. Or maybe that's like the old address.
I'm vannexation.
Strange too.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Um, but we, we do have the. It's the personal numbers.
Is that, um, that's great, because I want to make sure that we're really appropriate, pretty.
Excuse me, it's twelve ninety Washington Street.
Ain't it very?
Washington.
Right.
Too many Washington.
Okay, questions on? The motion to be amended to, uh, proof. And a release of pre-annexation agreement between the Village and the American Credit Union related to the site at twelve ninety four Washington Avenue, that would be in, in date. Yes. Any further questions? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, Jessica, let's go to the library board amendment.
Yes. So the village, uh, as we all know, recently took over as the sole operator of our public library. And the joint library agreement officially expired on June twelfth of this year. This change in ownership requires a code update, um, to reflect the membership of the library. We can say there were members from. The town, um, those members have been removed, um, means how the village is the sole operator. The, uh, code change includes removal of joint library references. Updated board membership and the updated term language that are consistent that with the library's bylaws. And, um, also one other minor change to generalize the state statute reference, references. Um, since those have been changing frequently over time and it's just more consistent to have that broad overarching reference rather than the minute breadth. Um, the, uh, library board is recommending adoption, um, to title to admit administration and personnel of the village as presented.
Very good. Thanks, Jessica. Uh, one note. Brought to our attention by, uh, DPI that, um, I will. Have the authority to appoint the school board member. Um, I will bring that up. I talked to Katie, table, that up. Appoint the school board member officially, even though I said pending school board approval. Um, it is not up to the school board for that appointment. It's up to the, um, up to the village. So I will put that appointment on at the meeting. So just so we're clear on that. Um, I will look for a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance, amending title to administration and personnel of Village of Grafton pertaining to the library.
Second.
Seven. Questions on that, you guys? Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
Yep.
Actually, Dave, I'm sorry, Kevin, no question. All right, so anyone else have questions? No, um, in favor say aye. All right, Jessica. Therefore, I'll give the government for our visit.
We've had to authorize municipalities to end the use of aid agreements for provision of services and useful, um, spa and workman assistance. The proposed agreement replaces a previous agreement that expired in October of twenty twenty two. Um, the only substantive change to the agreement language is actually changing references from Sheriff Johnson to Sheriff Knowles. Um, but, uh, obviously the board is the agreement in front of you. Um, the agreement establishes a formal framework for the, um, mutual assistance. Among the seven municipalities in Ozark County. The agreement provides additional law enforcement resources when a municipality's capacity may be exceeded. It also provides an emergency response framework and a cost and liability structure. The agreement, um, automatically renews annually and any party may terminate, uh, the agreement within thirty days. Staff is recommending approval of the agreement as presented.
Thank you very much. Corporation agreement. Internal, annual, Ozark County, and authorized the village president to start to execute the agreement on behalf of the village. Very good. Andy serve a question, so? Lisa?
Um, my question is, so does this actually also include Ozaki County? Um, I mean, these, I mean, these are, you know, that. Um, if Sheriff Knowles. I don't see, I mean, I know they also meet with Sheriff Knowles once a month.
I can answer that if you.
Oh, please.
That they are not part of the agreement. Uh, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is the, the sheriff's office has countywide jurisdiction, so they don't really need an agreement with other municipalities to do law enforcement anywhere in Ozaki County. Uh, the other has to do with sort of the nuts and bolts of the liability. Shifting aspect of it. State law allows municipalities to make those sorts of agreements, but the county is sort of treated differently. So it's just an agreement between the municipal entities. Really has nothing to do with. The actual ongoing law enforcement type of cooperation that the police departments have with the sheriff's office. It's really more having to do with that. Liability aspect of what happens when a Grafton officer, for example, responds to an emergency call in the city of Port Washington. Or vice versa. And something happens, which municipality has the liability? That's really the. The point of it.
Okay. Okay, so kind of adding the I's and crossing the T's, like assisting each other. And it be a liability.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and today I kind of was talking with. Chief. This is kind of like. Doesn't even exist, but I heard permit, there is an ambassador. And they're looking. Utilize this as a. Way of getting, um, you try to. Be done, a little bit off topic. Uh, the one, the one thing I do want to, um, make sure that there's no discussion in here of payment for services, um. If any way, shape or form.
Those, those recent discussions that have popped up are not part of this agreement. Those are separate and distinct.
So. We have mutual read. From time since October twenty two, it's just we just didn't have.
And, no, actually it was the formal agreement. It just simply said Sheriff Johnson's name on it and all they're doing is changing it over to Sheriff Knowles' name. Yep.
It, it's still.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
It's, it's. Sure.
It does say that. We have our municipality and all municipalities in the agreement, we, they don't have to, like, if Grafton gets called and says, hey, can you help us? Hiring Peter River or Paul or whatever, we don't, we have rights to turn that down and say, no, thank you, we don't have to go out.
Correct. If we don't have the available resources, we don't, we are not bound to respond by this agreement. This is, we will make our best effort to help out in a joint effort, uh, if we're able to. Yep. We're not bound to. Nope. Correct.
Right. Both. If you. The, the, both, thank you.
Absolutely. Just wanted to bring back an informational update for the village board as there was a clear direction by the board, um, of the administrator to pursue. Um, updating the way the, um, public, uh, fire protection charge is paid here in Grafton. Currently, the system is approximately seventy-five percent of the public fire protection charge is placed on the utility bills and paid by the users. Since nineteen ninety nine, the remaining twenty-five percent or about, um, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars has been paid, uh, through the fire department. With that, uh, the direction was to the administrator to pursue, um, amending the way this is collected to place the entire eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar. Annual fire protect, public fire protection charge onto the utility bills. Um. For comparison, that is what the Village of Sockville does, uh, with their public, uh, fire protection charge. It is entirely, uh, placed on their utility bills. This is based upon a request by the OCFD board, um, in an effort to help with the, uh, financial constraints of the fire department. Uh, with that, I just simply wanted to walk through a rough timeline because it is important for everyone to be aware because it will require a significant amount of, um. Cognizance and planning during our bu, respective budget sessions. Um. In November of twenty twenty four, the village took action to request a water rate increase. This was a regular water rate increase to adjust our utilities revenue needs. That process recently wrapped up with an, uh, late June public hearing and will then be implemented, uh. Coming forth. There is a thirty-day waiting period after that regular water rate increase is implemented. And then the village utility can apply or request a change to that fire protection charge. That won't be until late July. This also means that any village board action, further village board action on this cannot occur until after that date as well. Therefore, what the village board can expect, after August fourth meeting, a resolution will be brought forward with a, with an application to the Public Service Commission. Um, for updating that. Public fire protection. Charge and how it's collected. We then will have to submit it, um, assuming the village board approves it. We will have to submit that application packet to the Public Safety or Public Service Commission. And that will take between twelve and fourteen weeks for their review. So that means we're looking at early August, twelve to fourteen weeks. That places us well into not only the OCFD's budgeting process. But also the village's budgeting process. Because the uncertainty here is. And what I touched on in our last meeting, we can make this request. There's no issues with that at all. However, the pub, Public Service Commission has the right to change that fee. Right now, as I mentioned, the total annual fire protection charge is eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The Public Service Commission can change that if they feel it is necessary. It could go up, it could go down. So that needs to be. Thought about and planned for accordingly, not only in the village's budget, but also the, um, fire department's budget as well. So really, this is information only. Simply wanted to make the board aware of the timeframe that's associated with this process. Um, just to make sure everybody understands the background to this and how, uh, it may impact this fall's budgeting practices. No actions requested.
Thank you.
Um, Jesse, uh, one thing that I, I. Believe is inaccurate, um. Well, the fire department was volunteer previously twenty thirteen. Um, I spoke with one of the previous fire chiefs. And he did say there was no fee for hydrants. Whether it was a pass-through. Fee, he didn't know, but because they were a volunteer fire department, they did not pay. For any fee for that. So, um, I know you said nineteen ninety nine.
Correct.
Um, I, I, you know, I, I spoke with the fire chief, so I'm not sure if that needs to be looked into.
Uh, the resolution we have on file saying that's how the charges are disseminated and that is what I am going by as a resolution adopted by the village board setting forth that percentage.
No, the other issue is, I mean, the other comment with this is, you know, we decided, uh, a few weeks ago as a board to ask the PSC to look into this. We all agreed, I believe, that there's a hundred percent. Um, yes, we have to wait for a thirty-day waiting period until seven point six or seven point seven. Um. I guess I would ask that we, it doesn't say we have to wait to take action until then. We could actually take action and say, this is what we'd like to do after the thirty-day period, hoping that we can try to speed things along. Um. Twelve to fourteen weeks is a long time. Then I. Waiting for another three weeks, who are the four? Um, you know, maybe right on seven point seven with previous action from tonight, we could go forward and hopefully get some answers before that.
It's the PSC requirement, um. We just went through the waterway study. The PSC has already had the chance to review what our public protection charge is, so they have the actual number, but not going to come back. Request to do the analysis again. Be rather fairly quick. How many cases they have to. Think it would take.
And then twelve to fourteen weeks.
I can make an inquiry, have our consultant.
Paul, please do, and then get back to.
And, and, and just the other thing, um, was there any opportunity, I reckon, I'm not sure if you know, was there an opportunity to. Quickly add an addendum to that, to the PSC?
To change, they recommended to wait until that was approved and then as soon as that. Um, it's effective over the thirty-day waiting period and then so. The request, it's a one-page application. Unlike the application we had.
Okay.
Fifty. So it's a one-page application.
And can we submit that electronically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're. Yes, we are following the guidance of not only our consultant, but also the PSC themselves in this process to make sure that the board does not run afoul of any actions taken because we want to do it right the first time. Yes, Veterans Memorial Park is going to be quite busy this week. We have a food truck event, uh, tomorrow evening and then gala concert series on Thursday. Um, look forward to seeing folks there. Um, all of the liquor licenses have been picked up with all fees paid and inspection orders being completed. Um, earlier this evening, we had a, uh, nice letter provided, uh, regarding, uh. Um earlier this evening, we had a uh nice letter provided uh regarding uh work done by our public works department. That's nice uh public forward, um public facing kudos. I'd like to uh kind of pull back the curtain and give a little bit of kudos to our inspection department. This is some of the behind the scenes work that speaks to the diligence of our staff. Our inspection department has kept pace with the seasons development. The seasons is the multifamily development on Port Washington Road, south of Falls. Um final inspections are over halfway complete with all of the rough framing inspections having been completed of that fourteen building project. So that is one development here within the village outside of all of the single-family residential here, outside of all of the smaller remodeling permits, outside of all of the Sockville permits. That we have authority and responsibility to inspect. Our inspection department has kept pace with this private developer to ensure timely inspections are conducted and followed through upon. So again, with all fourteen buildings, all of them have received rough framing inspections have been signed off on. And over half of them have received final inspections that have been signed off on. That is an amazing pace for a singular department. And I just want to um give a shout out to our inspection department and all of their efforts in that one area. But it is compounded by all of their realm of responsibility here, not only in Grafton, but also uh by service contract with the uh village of Sockville. And that is all I have to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. And let's go to licenses.
Yes, Chief Capanera is recommending approval of operator licenses for thirty-one individuals as listed.
Great.
I'll approve.
I'll second.
Andy, any questions at all? Okay. Steve. Are you saying aye? Aye. Both? All right, uh Jessica.
Yes, so this is the first denial of operator's license on the agenda to Donald Patterson. Chief Capanera is recommending denial of this operator's license due to the fact that Mr. Patterson was charged with um third OWI in addition to um past criminal convictions.
Very good. Uh motion in second to deny this. Bring it to the table for discussion, limited discussion.
Um no proof.
Okay, Sarah, um. We got the information in front of us. Um. Um all in favor to deny Donald Patterson's uh operator's license, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We'll go on to um Ms. Spurgeon, Latricia Spurgeon, who we were from earlier today.
Yes, um I would like to hear from Attorney Woodward, um if he had any suggestions or or other, what maybe other communities have done in this situation.
From what I've been able to look at just sitting here, I would ask the board to uh table consideration of. This request to permit my office to consult with the chief. Uh to do a little bit deeper dive into her issues because I was not aware of this until reading the packet earlier today.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. Um and I would look for uh a motion to table uh the denial of operators' license to Latricia.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Hey, you said Kevin. Front of us, just go to the board and all in favor, say aye. Aye, both. Uh motion carries to table. Uh Jessica, can I open up the gathering place?
Yes, so Gathering Place Brewery Company, um who is doing business as Sahala Ale Works. It's considered a brewery through the state of Wisconsin and is therefore licensed through the state rather than the village. Um however, at this time, um the owner, Joe Edo, has submitted a permit for a temporary second location to allow Sahala to sell beer and wine at Centennial Park. At the K nine cornhole tournament on August sixteenth from eleven AM to six PM. The brewery must receive approval from the village um for this off-site location as part of their application to the state. Uh again, because the state has final action for all brewery. Um staff is recommending approval of the temporary off-site permit.
Great, I'll look for a more. Acknowledgement and approval for Gathering Place Brewery Company, CDVA Sahala Ale Works to sell beer fermented malt beverages at K nine cornhole tournament on August sixteen, twenty twenty-five from eleven AM to six PM at Centennial Park.
One second.
Dave and Amy, any questions? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. Uh Jesse, let's uh go to the uh transfer of the class B licenses.
Apparently, we have kind of a unique situation here. Um and. Clerk Olson put together a really nice informational report here and I'll walk through and summarize it. If there are granular questions about this process or the um requirements behind it, I would definitely defer to our clerk, but. In short, the village of Grafton has eleven regular class B licenses and eight reserve class B licenses. Um these are liquor licenses that are in essence all encompassing and um provide for a wide range of sales. Um we, the village, received an inquiry from a private entity, a private business in the city of Cedarburg, asking if they could purchase one of our reserve licenses. By state law, we as a municipality are able to sell one. However, we cannot sell it to a private entity. We can sell it to another municipality. So we explain that to the business owner. Business owner got in touch with the clerk's office in the city of Cedarburg. The clerk's offices conferred with one another and the formal request has come from the city of Cedarburg to request the purchase of one of our reserve class B licenses. Now, this is where it kind of takes a turn. The city of Cedarburg can make a general request to purchase this license. They have, they, they have full authority over where that license goes if we sell that to them. They have full authority as to where, who they issue that license to. It, once it is out of our hands, we have no jurisdiction whatsoever. We simply take payment and release the license. Um causes of concern. Number one, we lose complete control over that license. It is with the city of Cedarburg. They can do with it what they please. I understand the city of Cedarburg actually has a waiting list for liquor licenses as they are out. And thus. If we were to sell this license to the city of Cedarburg, it may not actually go to. The private entity who requested it in the first place, because again, it is at the sole authority of the city of Cedarburg. Number two. It means we lose the license. We don't, just because we sell one, doesn't mean we, we get it back. We lose that license. And as we all know, we are a growing village. I would not want to forsake that long-term asset of holding a available liquor license. Um for a one-off type of situation. Um so those are a couple of points of concern there why staff is recommending denial. Or not to sell a reserve class B license to the city of Cedarburg. Um again, it is hesitancy based upon the fact we completely lose control of that license. We don't know whom it would be issued to. But also the fact that we are losing one and we would not gain that back. So with that uh recommendation to not sell the reserve class B license to the city of Cedarburg is presented to the board.
Bring this to table for discussion. Not sell to the reserve class B license to the city of Cedarburg. Dave and Sarah. First thing.
If. We did sell it and. That they issued the license to whoever. And they, for whatever reason, then lost their right to have that license. Would it ever come back to us or we lose it permanently?
We lose it permanently. It becomes property of the city of Cedarburg. Mm-hmm.
They have reached out to me as a courtesy to, for this establishment that's asking. They've reached out to me. Um they said they really. They have no interest in buying one in the first place, so. Understood. Thank you.
Twice. It's how many?
Four.
Uh then I guess. Me planner. Um. I know Parker Jones. Perhaps he's having. If anything else that is on our radar for default.
At this time, I'm not aware of any. Future operations that require a full.
Could we charge any price for this that we absolutely want?
Yes. As long as it. As long as it is not less than ten thousand dollars. Yes. And that we would then pass that.
We do.
Yes.
Okay, can you ask any price? Thank you. Amy.
Do we get a license back when an establishment closes?
Uh yes. Yes.
So for example, Charcoal Grill. Um did not renew their license because their flow was correct.
So we currently have one regular class B license available as well. And it's really on a, it's up to the discretion of the village board as to who they would issue that to. Someone would come in and.
So. occasion have. Reserve and one regular.
Yes, and we can't. Our regular. Those are ours. Permanently forever. It's only the reserve class licenses that we can sell between municipalities.
So the reserve license I know is ten thousand dollars is what we charge. So someone that has a reserve license that is renewing, can they move to be regular license and pay a fee? Or the ten thousand dollars is a one-timer?
The ten thousand dollars is a one-time fee that actually from initial issuing.
Same.
Yeah. Selling off our licenses given the fact that, you know, we certainly grow and I think that there are. Folks who come in and say, geez, I'd like to do X, Y, and Z, and I'd like to have a full license. Definitely not in favor of that, so then. Comments here back. Um Sarah, you.
You to grow as a community and make you comfortable to think about letting the thing away. Then potentially, you know, not allow future visitors in our community. They haven't.
Any other discussion? Okay. We're both all in favor of denial of the transfer of that um license to Cedarburg. Say aye. Aye, opposed. In that motion. To approval of the expenditure. I didn't see anything out there, Jesse.
No, sir.
Sixty-six thousand five dollars and ninety cents. And if there's any. All you two. All. The board. Other questions? All in favor, say aye. Both. I'll look for a single uh or two motion and second here. It can be to open or to close. See, considering employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data on public employee over which governmental body have jurisdiction and exercise responsibility or also for an individual.
I'll second.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good very much. We'll clear. The. Boardroom and uh we can come back.